My name is Ken Smith, Mayor of Bader. And I'm grateful that there are a few of you from our community in attendance tonight. We welcome you. Especially grateful to have our elected officials with us on this regularly scheduled Bader City Council meeting, which I will officially call to order at 6:03 PM. I would make a special confirmation of Mike Parsons' presence. Do you hear us okay, Mike?
Yep, I hear you.
Okay, great. Good to go. And let's proceed with...oh, did I mention the date? It's July 12, 2018. So let's proceed with our rule call. Invite our city clerk to perform their course.
Judy Costello, here. Jason Bailey?
Here.
Joe Schei?
Here.
Mike Parsons?
Here.
Leona Sanderson-Hunter?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Also present. So with that, we have a full quorum. Let's proceed with our pledge of allegiance. If I may, would you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll proceed with the mayor's report. Felt it would be appropriate to continue to provide all present an update on the A Street project. Hopefully, you've been watching the progress that they've been making. I would note that I believe at this point, my interactions with the foreman and other employees working on it, lead me to believe they are going to finish within the 45-day limit that they've placed on themselves. And I know that this past week, I worked closely with representatives of the Assembly of God Church, who were expressing some desire and interest in paving the section to the west of their building. And so we've kind of acted as an intermediary in that potential. And they've indicated that they have the money to throw at paving. The contractors are amenable to the concept. So I can tell you that is in the mix at the moment as well. I know we did have some questions about the width of the egress on the 506. And some concerns about the width of that. And I think you were discussing that before the council.
I'm more concerned about the other end, by the church end. That's really annoying.
Did you measure the other end as well?
It's 20 feet.
Yeah. Yeah, I had the same thoughts, looking at it. You dropped an arrow. But it'll take getting adjusted to, I think. So that's the report I would have on that topic. To tell you, I was also in discussion with individuals that we've had brought to the attention of the council in this meeting, what is going to be happening with the easement property on the west side of the project. And we did some thought, gave it some thought, and did some cursory research on the topic. And our conclusion to that thought is that, in actuality, that property, that land, is under the control of the property owners.
Oh.
Yes.
Yeah, congratulations.
Yep, you are just now the proud owner of the next...
Yeah, next to that.
Yeah. And so, and that actually is the way easements operate within communities. So if you wanted to clarify that...
Yeah, the city will still maintain an easement over that section, which means an easement is basically the right to lay a roadway over the top of the property owner's property. So the city will still have the right, if at some time they want to widen that road again to that point, they can. But in the meantime, since we're pulling the roadway back and giving the property owners a little bit more room to use and enjoy, just like anybody's property who has an easement on it, you're typically not allowed to build any permanent structure on that area, but they can still use it and enjoy it.
May I ask you a question about that? Having said that, if Mrs. Radcliffe, her bakery example, there, you can't build on an easement, would not make sense. How am I, as customer, going to get from sidewalk to front door?
Well, you can run a driveway across an easement. You just can't build a structure on the easement. So she would need to have a driveway as part of her, as part of her project plan. She would need to have access onto the property, so she can build a driveway across there to go from A Street onto her property. So she could do that.
Why would we want someone to cut that new sidewalk?
Well, I don't know. That's up to the city council, but they have a right as a property owner to have access to create an access to it.
Put the papers down.
Yeah, the papers.
Sure. I mean, you see that every, I mean, any place you go with sidewalks, there's always that little dip where the driveway is to go into the, to the house or to the business or...
Well, I'm just saying, excuse me.
Any sidewalk is gonna have that. Right now, there's no, there's no driveways there. So it's just solid sidewalk. If there were driveways there, you would see that that was built in. Like next to the post office, there's a driveway that goes onto A Street. So you will see there that it dips down so cars can continue to drive through. But the rest of it, right now, there isn't any. But that doesn't mean that they can't create one when it's time for them to, to build up their business or, or home or whatever you put there.
Yeah.
You could, you could choose. That's a possibility as well.
There's no parking on that, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
No parking on that side of the street?
Oh, no, I believe there is some parking there. Over by the post office.
By the post office.
Down by the post office, there is. Yeah. I can't remember if there is parallel parking there.
There's like this way of parking, going north, facing north.
Some angle parking.
Angle parking on the other side. And I can't remember if there is parallel parking on that section. I have to look.
I just had visions of it being a downtown core area where businesses were on the sidewalk like this, not driveways and...
Karen's...
Anyway, anyway, I was just, I was just, that was just a thought.
Your short thought, right on, you know, where the old existing sidewalk used to be, and then, I mean, you're 15 feet from the street. It's not...
I'll just put down a paper.
Just a thought. I was just thinking about that.
I think, to me, I think the important takeaway here is that it's giving a lot of extra latitude to the property owners to do what they are inclined to do with it. It's a commercial residential zone, so I hope that that, that was some positivity. So there, that's my report on that project.
Judy, I want to say one more thing. If you, if the property owners or if the council wants to make that section of roadway on A Street so that they can build right up next to the sidewalk, then the city would have to release the easement for that section, which is a possibility. The city would have to make those choices to do that. Right now, there's still an 80-foot wide easement there. And so that restricts how close they can build to the sidewalk. If somebody came and said, hey, we want to build stuff right along, would the council be willing to, you know, sell back or whatever, some of that easement? Then council could make those decisions at that time. But right now, the way it's set is just, is a different way.
All right, let's move on to type two. Review of the Fourth of July celebration. Felt it would be appropriate, as much as the community, the city, who's helping sponsor that event, to report that, from my perspective, it was extraordinarily successful. Record numbers of individuals came out. We ended up with more vendors than we thought we were going to. There was a spirit of patriotism and camaraderie that I thought was remarkable, most gratifying. So we've already set in motion plans for next year. We've established contact with the individuals who did the pyrotechnic work for us. We've got plans in place to make it even bigger and better next year with enough lead time that we know we'll have. So that was my perspective on it.
And this will remain a city-sponsored event?
Yes, if the will of the council, if they're so inclined.
Maybe some thought on parking. Although, we have five acres, we could possibly charge five bucks a head.
Yeah.
There you go. I was gonna bring that parking issue up as well, because for some reason, people thought that a potential wetland was a good place to park. And they were just pulling up in my yard. I had three cars deep down C Street. I had to ask people to clear the, let, do the path and the road.
Sure.
They were rude. They left garbage in my field. They were rude. And they just, I mean, they just parked right in my, just pulled right in my yard. Like, it was a good thing to do.
Well, that's true. No, we had three cars parked in our little alley, but they weren't rude. So I thought it was okay.
I've had some rude people there, too.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
Well, there's always a little negative with a lot of positives. So we're, I think, we're positive, but I do think it's a point that we need to address.
There needs to be parking, designated parking.
But I know that, Mr. Parsons, did you want to weigh in on that and maybe other observations that you had?
No, I know that the parking, I've heard a lot about the parking, and I think that it would be a, I mean, we definitely, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done, that's changed for next year and make it even smoother. And, you know, even if we got tape and taped off your yard, Leona, I think that that would be, or put a price tag out there and charge people to park there. But I think that overall, I got a lot of positives from the people leaving that night. We definitely, next year, I definitely want lights out in the field more for people walking out, just for safety, so that after the show, we can turn off another set of lights. But it's all little stuff, and hopefully, we can make it better next year.
Okay, great. All right. Any thoughts and ideas you might have? So I hear you saying that it is not an option to use your property down by 506.
Like potential wetland that I can't touch? No. If I can't touch it, they can't park it. I mean, seriously.
Also, on Fourth of July, for the main day committee, I threw together a fundraiser and sold potatoes and cotton candy. And again, I want to thank Reggie for building the float. I did mean indisrespect with using it up there. I've heard some backlash on that. But also, we raised $450 for your main day.
Fantastic.
Yeah, thank you. My kids loved your cotton candy.
Line number 25, people are deep.
I know. Yeah, I had to turn the lights off to get everybody to go.
Thank you for supporting. It was important.
Oh, by the way, we're gonna use the float again in Toledo this weekend. If anybody sends you a beache's egg, we'll be there, too.
Fantastic.
Hopefully, we'll make it to the end of the parade.
Backlash didn't come from me and Reggie. Reggie built that for you guys to use it, to make money. It's just other circumstances.
Right.
But he's a bigger person than that. He didn't, I made a comment to my friends, not to anybody that was gonna go tell it to the whole town. So if you had backlash...
I just wanted to touch base on it.
That's why we built it.
Yeah, good.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, we're using it, using the nut.
Excellent. All right, and so, come on, I just felt like the council should be aware of how we're doing with our new waste treatment operator. He's turning out to be as skilled and committed as we hoped he would be. He's seized the position, he's taken the ownership of it, and he's very confident. And he's embracing opportunities for training to sharpen his skills to the lagoon system that we have. So a very positive report on how he's doing.
Is John still down there on the lagoon basis?
Yes. He's doing the test dailies for Tuesdays and Thursdays. So Bill Wilson is doing the Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays. So that's how it's working out. Everybody's satisfied with it. So last but not least, the SDP bicycle race. I felt it would be appropriate to mention. So this coming weekend, we're all accustomed to it. I hope that we can support it and be friendly to all those who pass through.
Build me your wetland.
Build me your wetland.
Stop over there. You might as well just start making some money.
It's time to exploit that. Maybe a pond or a fishing pond or something.
More money.
Money takes on.
I know that, once again, the Assembly of God Church is hosting a goodly number of the riders, and we're going to ensure that the park is mowed and manicured as well as possible for our visitors.
Did they know what their route will be? I'm sorry.
Generally, it depends on the individual.
Well, they're not gonna be able to go down A Street. I was just wondering how the church is.
Got you. No, it hadn't, it hadn't been any thought to signage and stuff. They'll be left to their own genius capacities, I think. So...
They'll figure it out.
We're doing this all over, little thing.
I think they will.
Yeah, we might as well, we might as well just make, be what? B Street. Have to put a detour sign up to B Street.
Now, there's, we got to goodly number of detours signed, so if they need to, we'll follow into the place.
Because if they go up A Street, no, you still won't get in my lot.
Yeah. Is there any thought as far as like the city or the park board wanting to get involved now that the Allen Store is not involved in supplying any kind of support for them?
There has always been thought along those lines, but most of their conversations radiate from McMurphy Park.
Right, perfect.
And, but, once again, they're just not in a position with the facilities to make it available. And as you know, it takes probably 10 months of lead time to advertise its availability. So it's, I don't, I, my sense is we're not gonna see any use of it this year. The park board can't exploit it.
Well, no, I was thinking maybe that they could talk to some of the support people down there, maybe get something rolling for next year.
Yeah, it's something to think about, yeah. But their next meeting is Monday at 6:00, so it's definitely something that will draw to their attention.
May I ask, Jason, are you talking more like a fundraiser-type situation or more like a support?
Well, it's more like, everyone's always looking for a place to camp. We're right in the middle of Seattle and Portland. Mrs. Jones used to do it in her yard, she used to actually charge, and just a few bucks for, unfortunately, got a shower, and they always had like a potluck or whatever, but just for a place for them to be able to camp, even if they dry camp, because they have such a support staff system with cars and, you know, vans, and they got everything they need, pretty much, linear port potties, you know?
Well, we hosted riders for five straight years there for a while, but...
I think we got like four or five barbecue pits down there and stuff, so, I mean, I would think that it would be something that the city could, could try.
It's not a new concept, so...
It's far enough away from the train, if you know, to...
Okay.
Just an idea for the park board to maybe pursue for the future.
Okay, all righty. Then I think that takes care of the thoughts that I had to share with you. So let's proceed now with council reports. Any thoughts from the council? Yes?
I have a report. Citywide Yard Sale is August the 4th, from 8 to question mark, and they usually stop about 3 o'clock. I have a couple of people that called, and they want to do it on Friday, so there'll be some, some pre-start on Friday.
What's the date on that?
Saturday, August the 4th.
Oh, okay.
And then I will be opening, I've been closed for three months at the community center, and it has become a financial hardship on me. I will be opening the community center back up on August the 6th. Someone will contract to friends, you're gonna have to figure out what to do with me.
Well, they'll find a way.
Figure out what to do with me, so... May I ask one question? We have to have people come and ask about, about the, if we're doing that this year is okay, if we give them your phone number?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And I'm asking everyone to call my home number, which is 295-3036, and leave their address. That way, I can put them on the map.
Yeah, I've been telling people for Saturday in August...
Come see me if they want to. Yeah, perfect.
Great.
Good for traffic jam.
Might as well be out there on the corner signing people up today, up to...
Oh, yeah.
All righty. Well, then, any other council thoughts? Okay.
I, I got to speak with John at the Jags Trucking. He had, his father passed away, and he said that he will be there on Friday, not tomorrow, but next Friday, to haul up all that stuff. So just an update on that for the yard debris.
Great.
So will he, will he be installing the blocks also?
Twenty?
Mike?
I don't know if he's going to be installing them right then also, but he said that he will be there Friday to, to get it taken care of. So that's a lot of my know.
We actually don't have any actual date for opening that back up.
No, none of them planned yet.
Well, they've been planning, we're just keeping it up.
I think it's hard to get it.
Exactly. Pre-annoyed. Okay. And with that, thank you, Mike. Let's proceed with our agenda approval. So, does anyone have any additions?
I was going to put the lamp pile on it, but since Mike has given him the report.
Perfect. So await council action.
I'll make a motion to pass, oh, what am I doing? I'll make a motion to pass the agenda for 7/12/2018.
Okay, we've heard the motion from Mrs. Costello to approve the city council agenda for this evening as written. We have a second?
Yeah.
Seconded by, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None? So now with our minutes from the previous workshop and council meeting.
I have a motion to approve the city council workshop and the meetings minutes on 6/28/2018.
Okay. This is submitted a motion to approve the minutes of those two meetings as noted and as written. Do we have a second?
I'll take it.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
I have two, because I was not present.
Oh, okay. Ready. The motion still carries for, with an extension. Now voucher approval for the first half of July.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the first half of July 2018 in the amount of $53,564.60.
Mr. Schei, we have a motion to approve the voucher expenditures as indicated. Do we have a second?
One second.
Seconded by Mrs. Costello. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Special reports. We know we've got Deputy Cheeseburg, policeman with us. And return the microphone over to you.
I didn't give you guys the monthly report, did I?
Well, for, let's see, for June, I can give you the numbers. It's 341 contacts, eight calls on shift, a total of 10 calls off-shift, or 18, 13 traffic stops, two infractions, and two misdemeanor arrests. Three criminal deals for the month, an assault for which was cleared by an arrest, violation of a protection order is cleared to arrest, and we issued some MIPs at the park. So that was clear there.
Ooh, the park?
The park.
My property park. Yeah.
What does this issue stand for?
Oh, minor in possession.
Okay.
Yep, minor in possession of alcohol.
Excellent.
So, because there's no drinking in the park.
Excellent. Thank you for that.
Okay, any questions?
I have a comment. It's okay. I don't know if you noticed, but we got one of our park rules signs up at Warden Park. We've been needing to get that up so that it says that the park closes at dusk or 9 o'clock. So if anybody's there after, now you guys are able to say, see, it's right there.
Okay.
We put it on the bathroom. It's ginormous. I don't think anybody could miss it. So I just wanted to let you know that you guys can use that.
I'll let them, I'll let them know that, so...
And also, I haven't reported to the mayor yet, but John, our public works employee, reported that there's been some vandalism to the bathrooms down at McMurphy Park, like ripping toilet seats off and things like that, which is just typical stuff.
And that's in the porta potters?
That's in the porta potters, yes.
Okay, that's true.
Yeah, so, yeah, so just hoping to let you know that that's happening, unfortunately. It's kind of typical, but...
Are those, are, do you guys pay, are those yours, or are you paying for them?
They are.
Oh, yeah, they are yours. Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate your service to our community. There is a need. I would encourage all of you, if you hear reports of activities are inappropriate that ought to get the attention of our law enforcement, feel free to dial 911 or call City Hall, or make sure you fill out a complaint form so that we can address it through proper channels. So, just so you know.
To, along with that, I hear a lot of people talking about rowdy people and things that they should have called the sheriff on, and they didn't, but they should have.
Me, too. I hear it almost weekly.
Yeah.
And there are activities...
For safety reasons, call the sheriff.
Right.
Someone's gonna get hurt.
There are activities going on that we're aware of in the past couple of weeks that are certainly worthy of note, so... But we know the sheriff's department's very responsive. We're grateful for that.
Can I ask a quick question, since we're just kind of talking about a park here? Is John extremely busy?
John is, I think, fully employed at the moment.
Because the big park really, I was down there, the dandelions are in full power all over.
Is that...
Mm-hmm.
I know that he's done overtime in the absence of our...
That's what I was thinking about the water plant thing.
But he's done the weed eating in anticipation of Fourth of July, so we'll get him on by then. Okay, thank you for...
I was down there last week, and I thought it looked very well manicured.
I was there before yesterday and got out there.
That's, that's the dandelions for you, I guess.
It's not that the grass looks...
Right, the grass looks great.
The flowers are really green. Those are for you to pick at home and put in your bins.
Thank you. Yes, all right. So, all right, well, let's proceed now with our official city business. Item number one is discussed the city's planning priorities. This was a topic that we felt ought to be placed on the agenda, because we are, we've established, as hopefully you're aware, a very good, close, and local relationship with Matt Mathioshi, Lewis County Economic Development Director. And he's very supportive of our comprehensive plan and the need that he's aware of that we have for financial assistance in completing that project. So he's asked us to identify, and you hopefully have the memo in front of you. So we felt like it would be appropriate if you would take some time and, I think, place these in a priority order. That was the objective, right?
He just needs the top one or two areas that the city is wanting to focus on, or that they feel like are the most important to focus on with the planning. that they feel like are the most important to focus on with the planning, in, in a planning way. So, the information that he is going off of right now is from, as I put in the letters, from yourself and myself and the city planner, but he wants to know what the council, you know, he says, "That's good, let's make sure that's what the council is really wanting to do," so he would like to hear from you guys in a meeting saying, "Yes, we, we want to do our planning document, we want to finish it, and the reason is because we want to focus on these one or two top priorities that are important to us as council."
But where is the document at this point?
The draft document?
Five-year, whatever it is, the comprehensive plan, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, yeah, we have copies of it in the, in the office, we've got it online, the old one, the one that we're updating. Is that what you're talking about? You're talking about the new document that they're working on? The old one or the new one?
The new one. I thought that's what we were talking about, on this twenty thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
I refer to the new one, and I would like to know where it stands at this point, where is it in?
There hasn't been any changes to it since it was posted online months ago. It's still on the city website, I can show you where it is, or I have copies of it that I, I don't know if I provided you guys with hard copies or not, I can't remember, but it's been quite a while since anything new has happened, because we haven't had any funding to pay for it. Mr. Cooper got started on it, and got started on some of the information as much as, as we had funds for it, but then we ran out of funds and have been spending our money on other things instead, and so now we need to finish the document, but in order to do that, we need the additional funds.
I pulled up last year's, I pulled up the budget, and in twenty seventeen, we, we have under planning and development, is what we're talking about?
Yes.
Thirty thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents was spent. And then we're gonna put another twenty towards it, is that what I'm understanding?
That's what they tell me.
Fifty, fifty thousand dollars, and have we, are we gonna make that any changes?
Well, not all of that thirty thousand dollars was spent on just this, that was all the planning budget, all the times that he helped us with other planning things for the city as well. I might have to look to see how much, but it's probably somewhere in the twenty to twenty-two thousand dollar range that was spent towards the document that we're talking about.
Most of it would cost you about twenty-five to thirty thousand, most small cities like ours. Do we think you need your...
Good, how's one of your planning? Ken?
It's a, it's a state-sponsored, I won't say the word. Thank you.
Requirement.
Requirement? Well, a mirror image of this and make changes for, for another, you know, and it's very nice of this gentleman to, you know, reach out there to us, I think that's wonderful, but, call it Miss Molly, forty-two thousand dollars to plan, what we're planning.
We're doing something about the drainage issues in Mater Falls or need this and all? Because we went, we worked on it, worked on it, worked on it, and then we bought some equipment, and then it just kind of...
I don't see anything on it that says drainage.
I know, that's why I'm not...
That would be stormwater.
Capital facilities.
Yeah, it would be under the capital facilities.
Infrastructure.
Or possibly used in infrastructure, yeah.
So, you want to put that at the top of the list?
I do.
Yeah.
So, this document basically updates all the information, like this, like how many people are injured, what the status is, and all that's, that updates, updates all, well, it's not though, it has to all be updated.
I know, I know, I realize I'm making this small, but it's just, when I see the money...
I know, but... The problem is, without this document, we can't spend money on anything, we can't do any projects, and so, we're not allowed to spend our, the city's money, and we're not allowed to request grant money, or loan money, or anything like that, until we have this document placed, so these are the places we want to spend our money.
Same with the park, the park gets by here, park land.
It's exactly the same thing, yeah. Yeah.
All right, if we have a, if I'd like to make a comment?
Whole town, our size, been about twenty-two to twenty-five, and we spent twenty-two, so it's almost done.
Well...
I'm sad.
I don't know if that's an accurate number.
Yeah, probably could be, varies from community to community, but I'd say that, to me, is a fairly round, average number, but...
So, are we close to being done?
If you, if I had a gun to my head, I would say we're about ninety percent done, so, but that might be oversimplifying.
That's not, this list is a list, well, no, this isn't the correct list of, but this is a lot of what needs to still be completed. He has done the preliminary work, but, and he's worked some on the housing element, but the rest really hasn't been done yet.
How much do you think he would go?
I would say about half. I'd say he's about halfway, that's my guess.
And so, Jill, Victoria and Scott, and I know Kelly, they all worked really, really hard and have been working really, really hard in their little groups.
So, what they've been doing is reviewing, last year to the end of the year, what they did in the planning committee is they were reviewing the update, the draft update that Mr. Cooper provided, the work that he had done thus far, that first half or so, and reviewing his information and reviewing a lot, a lot of what he does is helps the city determine goals, because each section has to have goals and has to be split into all these different complicated sections, and you have, these are all basically setting goals for the city, and saying, "These are our planning goals, these are, these are our housing goals, these are our goals for the sewer, these are our goals for the water, these are our goals," and you have to, that's kind of what this whole planning document about, is about, is saying, "This is what we have, this is what we think we are gonna need in the next ten years or so, ten to twenty years, and these are the goals of what we want to try to get done, you know, in the next while." And so, they've been reviewing the stuff that he has provided already, and that's what they spent many months doing, and then, once we hit the end of the year and we didn't have any funding, and we didn't, we weren't aware of this twenty thousand dollars, or that wasn't available at the time to finish it, the last several months, the planning department or planning committee has been working to figure out if they can take over from there and finish the plan themselves as layman. And pretty much what they've determined is that they don't know enough to be able to do it. They don't understand the terminology, they could do it, but it would take them probably at least a year or more to learn everything they need to learn and be able to finish it. And so, in the meantime, the mayor, in working with Matt Matioshi, you know, talked him about this issue, and if there's some way we can help with some funds to have our planner finish this update for us, so we can get it done, this is what you're looking at, this is the result of that at this point.
And, let's be clear, it may not, we may discover that it won't cost all of that money, we'll see, but I'd be pretty confident in predicting that if we wanted to hear from Mr. Cooper, to have him respond to your inquiries, he'd be more than happy to come, I would guess.
I think so.
So, additional comments?
Did we meet our last goals? Because if we didn't meet the last goals, can't we just copy that over? I mean, I don't know what the last goals were, but are they, tell us, we didn't choose that one?
They're pretty dated, they're pretty dated, and...
The last time it was done was two thousand and five, so we're thirteen years different. Things have changed a lot in the economy, and the focus needs, but that's kind of part of the struggle we have, is that we don't really have a focus, and this document will help us set a focus for what's important to the city, and that's what Mr. Matioshi wants to know from you guys, just in very general terms, what are the one or two most important planning topics to you as a council? And if you're...
I'd have to agree with infrastructure, you know, I think, you know, if we're gonna start adding homes, like we have been adding homes, we need to make them, we're capable of clicking them on, so...
So, like the utilities?
The capital facilities.
And the capital facilities, okay.
I mean, that will always a big issue.
Okay, that's infrastructure.
Transportation, or sidewalks, buses, or what's next?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna stick on economic development.
Can we prioritize? Select a top two?
I, I agree with Judy about the economic development. If we had economic development, it would translate into tax revenue, which we wouldn't have money for the other things that were, that are on the list.
Sure, but if we don't have the infrastructure to support it...
Chasing our tail.
I was like, yeah, so, I was kind of like, if you build it, they will come to you, man, so...
Our infrastructure is supporting growth, it's targeted growth, but we are building houses, and it is legal, so, we know that we've got, we're in the design phase of the waste treatment plant, so we have, we are taking measured steps in that already, just to, you know, you know that.
Right, I'm more concerned, I think, with you two is wastewater, or not wastewater, but surface water and things that, I mean, we live on a, on a, on a spring hill, I think a lot of us have some kind of a water issue on our, on our properties, so, that's important, because there are a lot of people being blocked because of that, so, that's important. And, something that's right along five oh six, so that's important, that's important business infrastructure there too, as far as economic development goes.
Well, I agree with you two on the capital facilities as number one.
Sure, okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Any thoughts, Mr. Parsons?
Mike, did we lose you?
No, I'm here, say that again?
Oh.
My ear's voice is very light.
Oh, yes, okay, well, hey, any thoughts you'd like to add? Right now, it appears that number one...
I agree on the economic development, that's, I mean, we need money to do everything else, we need money to try to keep the prices down for all of the communities, so, we need to make money to be able to do that.
Add that as number two? Yeah?
Yeah.
So, number one, capital facilities, number...
So, number one is capital facilities, is that...
Number two, economic development. Okay, last official survey we did, official quotes, the residents' main concerns were parks and recreation, development, and transportation, so, should we pick a third?
Well, I think transportation, as far as roads and sidewalks, is part of our infrastructure, is part of our...
Aggregates.
So...
We'll put an arrow to that one.
So, under the capital facilities, kind of subsection also including transportation?
Roads, yeah, well, roads.
Okay.
Do we want to put parks, recreation as third?
Yeah, we're already doing the sewer and water and garbage and stuff, so, as far as this list goes...
I don't see high-rise apartments and any of that in our near future. I hope we don't, well, I know, that's not why we live here, so I don't see high-rise condos and et cetera, so, we get that one, and we're already working on sewer and water, so... So, I guess parks is the next, for three parks, at three?
I thought transportation was three.
We had, we have some infrastructure, so...
You were adding it to infrastructure.
So, that would actually get four, one point five.
There you go.
Okay, well, that would meet Mr. Matioshi's...
I believe so.
...quest to be paid. And with that, thank you for your input.
If you want to see the prior plan and the current plan, I'd be more than happy to either send you a file or print it for you, so you can have it, just let me know, and I'll be happy to do that for you.
And, once this next gentleman has this information, and will he be working on this project, and does he have a timeframe?
For when the money is available?
For the completion?
Oh, we haven't talked about that yet.
First things first, get the grant funding, and then we'll press in for a completion date, that would be my sense of it.
You might be able to dangle the money a little bit and say, "Okay, we want this done."
Oh, yeah, no, I think that we should, like that.
That's a possibility.
All right. Okay, with that, then, now let's go to item number two, update on additional paving budget.
At the last meeting that I was attended, I was waiting to hear back from Devin Jackson about, and the contractor, about the, the price for the extra A Street paving, and I still haven't had, gotten anything from Barkott, but Devin was going to follow up with a, another contractor that he knew in the area that might be able to do it for less money, and I haven't heard back from that. We do, TIB is accepting grants for the next season, and so, I'm going to put a list of other roads that we could get possibly free chip ceiling done on again, and probably have that available, so we can see if we can get some more free, free work done.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, all right.
So, A Street is out, the rest of...
No, well, we're just waiting, still waiting, I haven't heard from the contractors.
Well, maybe if we conjoined with the church, who are hopefully going to throw fifteen to twenty thousand dollars in asphalt for their project.
The only problem is, is the church is just ready to be asphalted, the road over there is...
Actually, it's not.
Not necessarily, no, there is some drainage issues that are troublesome there, and so, it is an issue that may be a nail breaker, but, we'll see, but my thinking was that maybe we could, if, if we're lucky...
Feel free to shake them down.
All right, you're welcome. So, when you get feedback from Barkott?
Yeah, I'll definitely forward it to the city if I hear something before you guys do.
Great. All right, then, we can proceed with item number three, continued discussion on our code enforcement officer and the building official. We have, it is obviously an ongoing discussion, it's not been a burning troublesome need for it, but I did reach out to Napavon, and I did talk to their city clerk, Mary Wood, who listened to our circumstances, and she said that, as you're already probably aware, that they have discontinued their relationship with Winlock for a variety of reasons, but they're, they're grandfathered three projects with the city, but they're not taking any new inspection projects from Winlock. So, until those three projects are done, apparently, there's not any mood or need, apparently, which is, I don't know how that works out for them, but to hire a new person. So, until they do, they're not in any position to establish an interlocal agreement with anyone, but if the city bater, when the appropriate time comes, if we have an interest in it, they're, she thought that they would be willing to consider it. Right now, they pay forty-seven dollars an hour plus whatever mileage is incurred with the Winlock individual, so, she threw that out there for information on purpose.
Yeah, it's not that...
Yep, so I can throw that out, and she did indicate that she was acquainted with at least one member of the city council, and had heard a positive feedback regarding that individual, I'll share that later after the meeting. It was Mary, Mary Wood, city clerk with Net... It was Mary, Mary Wood, city clerk with Naperville. He's acquainted with you.
I did what?
She's acquainted with you.
Mary Wood from Naperville, city clerk manager. She's a Facebook friend, so. Maybe if I saw the face.
Yeah, anyway, she spoke very highly, so I was impressed. So, that's where we stand for Trent Lowheed, of course, is from my perspective, a distinct viable option, but Trent Lowheed, is how you pronounce his last name.
Schehlas?
Schehlas, yep. And efforts to connect with him have been unsuccessful. I get his voice machine and left numerous messages, but he's either on vacation or out of pocket. So, we maintain the status quo with him, so nothing's changed. So, that's my latest report on that topic.
So, the gentleman that you just spoke up, Mr. Low-
Lowheed.
Lowheed. He was the one that you were waiting-
Yes, they-
Patiently for?
Yes, they hired a planner, they've agreed, gotten an interlocal with Lewis County. They're now providing all of the inspection services for Lewis County. But it's prompted them to feel the need to hire a second planner, and I would like to confirm that they've done that, that was my last conversation with him. He wanted to get that hiring completed, and then they wanted time to assess his availability for other inspection services for other communities. So, we're just kind of slow-walking through this process. So, that's the latest, I was hoping to hear where they're at with the second one, and if they've done their statistical analysis to discern if they would bring on other communities. But his last conversation with me was very positive, he was kind of, but that doesn't indicate how much their fee is. So, right now, the only figure I've got is forty-seven dollars an hour, plus. We have a talent?
You thought, you were thinking outside the box when you hired your wastewater treatment guy, and you got a retired person that was looking for extra money, or- Maybe we could do something along those lines, find some retired person that has worked in a planning department before, or worked for Lonnie, Philso, Schehlas, there must be some old people out there, that has, older people that have done that, that might be interested in doing something similar to what the wastewater guy is.
No, I wouldn't dismiss that as a thought, but when we hired Les Townsend in the first place, there was an individual in Toledo who fit that bill. But there was a reason, the personal situation had changed and didn't work out for him. But there, it's possible, there are people out there.
Have we actually ever advertised for the positions? Have we ever?
Not since Mr. Townsend came on board.
And do they hold a state license credential? So, you can't like advertise through the state planning people?
There's no formal-
I haven't found, I haven't found any way to do that.
How'd you find the wastewater guy?
We just advertised.
Oh.
We got six viable candidates, and so it worked out wonderfully for us. Of course, we worked also with the Evergreen Water person-
Evergreen Water and AWC on their website, and, yeah, which are typical places to look for wastewater and-
Right, there's more of a networking in that arena.
Building officials trickery.
Another comment?
There are retired people that stay licensed. The food truck that the Masons used that Fourth of July, my friend Clint Hatch did that truck for them. He was a licensed electrician, plumber, and whatever, whatever. But when he retired in seventy, he still held all of his licenses, because he knew he wouldn't give anything up. He had to be working all the time. So, there are retired guys that keep their, their documentation, so they can be legal.
Right, that's why I was questioning-
So, if you advertise in the newspaper with that knowledge in the ad, you might find somebody.
That's what, yeah, that's what I think we were saying, that was an eighty-five-year-old gentleman.
Was he a casual man, like, all around?
He was, in his eighties.
Yeah, there you go.
But, I, that's, it's, we're exercising options that has the need to exercise.
Are we allowed to use the word retired in advertising? Is that a, is that a-
Our age sensitivities.
I know, yeah, I was thinking that, so I'm just wondering if the word retired, I don't know-
No, you find that out when you get the response.
Right, right.
Pretty much part-time, is what it is, you know, that's-
We don't ask for age when it comes to the application. So, all right, well, with that, let's proceed with item number four, the continued discussion on RVs as dwelling units. Let's carry over from several previous council meetings. We'll turn the time over to the council to engage in whatever discussion may be that is appropriate.
I thought we decided last time for as far as determining hardship, all it needed to be was signed by your vote in the position.
Nothing was decided at that meeting, at that meeting, because it was a workshop. But there was question as to how to determine the hardship. There was a lot of different feelings about what couldn't, should, and shouldn't be done, and whether we were infringing on people's privacy and things like that. So, there was very much not a decision made on how to determine that.
I don't think any of us should ever decide if somebody's in that position, but, you know, if they go to their position, and the physician says, yeah, you know, you qualify for this, then we shouldn't even question it. I mean, it's, I think that would be good enough, right there. It shouldn't be up to us, right?
Right.
The question is legally, what can and can't we do, I guess?
Well-
And how do you want to determine who gets cut off and who's allowed?
But that's what I'm saying, we shouldn't be determining that, if they just-
You have to set the regulation.
So, we can set the regulation, like, they have to come with a doctor's note stating that they are in need of assistance?
So, are we saying that, are, are you saying that you would like the regulation to be that they have to be in some kind of physical hardship, as proven by a doctor's note?
I don't care if it's physical, mental, or what the situation is.
Financial?
Yeah, it shouldn't matter to us.
The doctor's not gonna write a note for somebody in a financial hardship, so, I know, that's, that's why it's so hard to-
So, we have to, like, put stipulations-
What's the criteria?
One for a physical application for a doctor's note, one for a, I don't know, determine financials.
Well, we have financial limitations on getting a reduced sewer bill.
Right, so they have to show their, their own-
They have to provide proof of their income, which is typically either your tax statement or proof of income, like, if you're on social security or whatever, you have to provide your annual social security statement that shows how much you make. You don't have to fill out forms like that already.
Right, if you're asking for assistance-
And we know that's legal.
You're used to filling out those forms anyway, and giving up that information.
But is that the kind, is that the criteria that you guys want to put on it? How, you have to decide how you want that to be determined, what qualifies somebody and what doesn't? That's-
Yes?
I just have a question, just, you're saying we have to fill out and show proof of income or proof of non-income or whatever, what your situation is, to get reduced sewer? Then, is everyone that's getting the summer rate have to do that?
No. Summer rate, summer rate's for everybody, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, the intent of the ordinance is to assist with an immediate family member's assisted living needs. Does it be financial, or whatever?
Right, and that's what we're trying to figure out how to write it out.
Why?
How do we determine if they're financially able or necess- need, the need is there, you know, I can say, well, my cousin is, we've just gotta get that in his house, he's in a need situation, but that's not part of the criteria.
No, but, but that should be on the burden of that, proving that qualification should be on the burden. If, if we say, do they have financials? Then, then they, and they want to do this, then they, I'm against the medical. I think that crosses a line. I think both of them cross. I'm only with financial, but the medical, I think crosses a line, because it is a problem, yes and no.
Comment?
How far are you guys willing to infringe on people's privacy? I mean, and I'll use my dad as an example, he's ninety-three years old, he probably shouldn't be living alone. He's not financially in a hardship, he's probably, you know, I could tie him up there or somewhere, but maybe I just want him next door, you know, maybe, you know, maybe I just think that at ninety-three, he should live next to me or somewhere where I can watch him, and, you know, do I have to show that he's financially or mentally or medically? What, maybe he's just somebody I think needs to be within striking distance.
Right.
Well, I think, you know, I don't, but I think, I think that's part of the criteria too,
that we would, you know, as far as, like, as in the physical part of the doctor thing, you know, age is also something that, you know, but everybody ages differently, so it's, it's, everyone's mental capacity is different at a different age, so everyone walks differently at a different age, so it's really, really difficult, so it almost, it would, it would have to kind of, it's a lot of things to play, come into play here, but, um.
Can it be by a case-by-case basis? Maybe, you know-
Well, we have to have, like, guidelines.
Yeah, the hard part is, my, again, this is, I'm talking to the attorney and getting her, you know, perspective on it, and I can only just share with you my interpretation of what I'm understanding her telling us, is that you have to have a set requirements, because then you're not treating people differently. You have to treat everybody the same, you have to say, okay, we have to set some criteria, and then if you meet this criteria, you get it, if you don't meet it, you don't. And that's the only way you can do it without getting sued, because if you do it on a case-by-case basis, you open yourself up to that lie-bill, well, they decided yes against, you know, for him, but now they're telling me no, and we're in the same situation, but, you know.
But they're related.
Right, and, and she, and our, our city attorney really, really discourages having things like this come back to council for a decision, because you don't want it to be a personal opinion decision. She really, really encourages us to get the regulations set, make sure the regulations are valid and, and within the legal parameters to be defensible in court, and then let the administration administer the ordinance that you set with the rules that you set.
Yeah, it's no gray area, just check these boxes.
No, no gray area, you either win this or you don't.
I really don't think it's too big of an infringement for a person to, to, like, use your father as an example, to go to, pick your dad to the doctor and ask the doctor if he feels that he'd be better, you know, sit next door with you, and then, and say, yes, here's a note, take it to City Hall. Now, I don't think that that's, that's too far, I would ask like some personal history or anything.
We don't even know why, we don't even know-
Doesn't have to say why.
Right.
We don't, we don't need any whys, or, I don't wanna know why, I just want it to be-
Fair.
Yeah.
We do have that input?
I think that, just something to consider, when we get into making personal decisions, we don't, we're going to open ourselves up collectively to accusations of favoritism. Maybe for some reason I don't like her, so I'll say, well, I don't think her father needs to be there.
Yeah, that's-
And I know with the doctors, you're absolutely right, they're gonna say, yes, no. They're not going to give you a detailed health report on the person. So, I don't, with everything else, I don't think it's a big invasion of privacy, and that's the only way you can have a black and white affair, is to have, decide what your criteria are and stick with it.
And so, if Cindy wanted to move her father up there, all you'd have to do is take your father to his doctor with this form, have the doctor sign it, bring it in, and we don't care about any of the details of the whys or the hows or anything, we just say, okay, you're good, go for it, move your dad up there.
As long as you do that, and then you get approved power, water, and sewer, you're this far away from getting the power, you don't have any-
I have to object here, as you predict, inasmuch as the mayor is required, authorized to enforce that any such ordinance passed by the legislative body, that you create and draft ordinances in an ideal world, you know, in theory, but working with people who are compliant and willing to cooperate, but it's the lone wolf exception that becomes your thorn. And you become the enforcer, then how are you going to deal with the individual who wants his grandma to come to and doesn't want a city official inquiring about whose property? You can always find the exception, because most laws are written for the weakest of society. And enforcement, I think, is, all of this is warm and fuzzy, but I'm weighing the enforcement on the troublesome individual. So, I just throw that out there, it's no surprise to you, you're fully aware of the spectrum of human behavior.
As far as the other things, limited to one at a time, and then we worked, we talked about, or that you guys talked about. That's a real one.
We did have an input from two people.
Do we have a lot of these in town? How many do you think we actually have, people living next to a child or whatever, an adult child? How many do you think we actually have in town? We're talking, you know, dozens, or are we talking six to eight? Or we're talking, if you had a ballpark?
Hard to say.
I'd go four or-
Well, because at this point, it's illegal, so we don't know, all we know is when there's an RV sitting there and we, we think someone's living in it, and we don't know most of the time who is in it, so it's, it's really hard to say. But I do get calls, prob-, I would say, I had to put a number, I'd probably say, between four and six calls a year, people asking, can I put someone in an RV on my property? I don't know if they meet this criteria or not, but, but I, I mean, I do get- It's not a huge problem, it's not like we have, you know, this-
But one is a huge issue if they want to fight. Right now, I think we have seven RVs being occupied, in varying degrees of, of difficulty. So, seven, I think, is a fairly, I mean, it's not a huge number, but if you have to be living next to one, that's got, as you are probably aware, now a tent is popped up, and five cars, and awnings and other such activities going till one and two in the morning, then suddenly, that one, that becomes your nightmare scenario, and so.
I'm, we're gonna, and you're limiting this to one person. What if it's grandma and grandpa, and you're just not able to be alone anymore? But yet, they can still get around, but there's just concerns about that, and, and you're just gonna limit it to one person?
I was just gonna bring that up too, because-
Oh, that's certainly a big point, person, maybe one unit. Go ahead, Mike.
One unit.
You've got the intent to say it again?
I'm not, I'm not thinking of just one person, because obviously, we don't want grandma and grandpa to get separated, but I'm thinking of one unit, not multiple units on the property, that's what, that's what I don't think anybody wants to see.
And you know what, I'm-
That's what, I'm sorry, that's what I meant when I put limit to one ADU at a time, I meant one structure, one RV at a time.
Right, and the Lewis County code enforcement thing, it actually says that the accessory dwellings shall not exceed twelve hundred ninety-six square feet.
Wow.
So, that way, it is- So that way, it is, it is, uh, clearly an accessory to the primary building, you know, so, um, so limiting size is another thing that we need to be concerned with. Like we say, no more than one family shall live in there. Um, is that mom and dad, is that someone and all of her grandkids, you know, that's, that's another, that's, everything's like we say, one and fuzzy, but then we have these hard questions.
You could have this disabled child, you know, such situation.
I mean, I'm all for it, I'm just, we've just got to get this.
The state provides financial support for individuals who are willing to take on elderly people. Uh, you know, north of Wenlock, I'm acquainted with residents, that started with one, and now there's five or six senior citizens who are incapable of sustaining themselves, and so the state pays them twelve hundred per person, so.
In a group home situation?
Home, yeah, in a group home, so.
I want to give me a couple.
That is very thoughtful.
Precisely what I'm talking about. Hey, Vader allows you to get an RV, it could be a big one, and maybe we have three or four.
Houses worth three, that's not a lot.
So, first.
Uh, just as a, a, an example, and I don't know, I haven't really played about it, but right next door to me, they have an RV, a little one with little fifth floors, and they have a tent now. And I'm not judging, but I don't know that these young people that are there have any physical, I could be wrong. Uh, but it's, it's a rental, so they are, you know, we've got like, I don't know how many people living there now. I think about five, let's count, but I'm just wondering how you can get, you know, get rid of them, or you couldn't ask them to leave, or you could, this one faster.
That makes eight.
Because most places wouldn't let you have multiple renters, bringing in their friends and neighbors to live there.
It's a can of worms.
Well, I was going to check out the yard. What is the setbacks for house in this community, what is it, five feet now or ten?
I believe it's fifteen on the side.
But you require, I mean, this thing to have a setback, more or less, when you're, you're saying they have to have so many feet from the neighbor's house. Your property goes to your property line.
No, all of those setbacks, backs are made for EMT firefighters and things like that.
Okay, but the, the point is, it's your property. You shouldn't have, I mean, what if you have a small lot that you've got enough room to put an RV right next to your house? So you disqualify all those people with small lots because if you put an RV there, uh, the neighbor's house is too close to them. So what, how do you, how are you, that's not fair. If, if it's your property, it's your property, and you should be able to use it from property line to property line.
It's fire hazard for your neighbor.
Oh, please, geez.
That's why you have setbacks.
And the property already has a setback.
It's five on size, fifteen on the back. There's like twenty or thirty on the front.
Well, I mean, then your pro-, your house is, uh, could catch fire on too. I mean, come on, I've got wood stamped on my fence right now that this wonderful person told me about a year ago that they'd get to it. So I have all this wood out there that's dry and can be a tinderbox too, but I can't do anything.
You have a power cord going to it and a furnace going in it and.
Cooking.
Lights and cooking in it.
I don't know, but they set up fireworks out there right by it, so that just, that doesn't make any sense to me.
Are you thinking about staying with just the setbacks that are currently in the regulations?
I would.
Five and fifteen, you know.
Well, we've got to make sure we stay on that.
Yeah. Who establishes it? You guys are the fire department EMTs. Can you just say, okay, we only want three feet? Do you have the power to do that, or do you have to go with what the fire department says?
Well, do you want a gentleman to get a gurney between you and your neighbor's house to get down to his bedroom window? I guess you'd want to, I don't know.
I'm just asking this to clarify a point, you know, like, if you can decide that, that, that they are taking too much land, that's all going good, but you're going to be in violation of their, because you guys don't make the rules, my understanding's right. The fire department EMD makes the rules, so they're the ones you have to go with.
That's what I'm arguing with, I think they, they do our setbacks.
I, I don't know, I wasn't here when the setbacks were, are set, you know, they've been part of the development relations for, regulations for longer than I've been here, so I honestly don't know how they make the determination, how they decide what the actual measurement is, I don't know. I'm, I know that's probably part of it, I know that there is, uh, part of it is that you can, um, that for the comfort and the, another thing they talk about is having sufficient fresh air. You can't have all the buildings so close together, you have to have a certain amount of open space on your land, a certain percentage or something like that, um, it's typical, but I, how they come up with that, I have no idea.
Well, I think we should. I think we should, we should do like we did with that twenty thousand dollars we were talking about. Let's list these things that are priority, that we're trying to figure out because, I mean, are we all set on the doctor's thing, and are we all set on, um, the financial?
I think so.
Okay, I think a little better way to do it.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
That's what we're brainstorming for.
So medical and financial are good, and, and we want it on the side or in the back?
One or the other, or both? They have to be one or the other?
Well, it says side yard or backyard only.
I think she's talking medical or financial, or does it have to be both?
Oh, 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 well, just one or the other. One or the other, okay.
With the financial, I would do the.
Josh, I think we're very, we're pretty close, I mean.
I know, I'm counting.
That's what I'm saying on this.
Well, it's, it's, like Joe was saying, you could come in and apply for the lower rate on the sewer bill.
So are you going to hold these people to that standard, the sewer bill? How much money they made?
It's up to them to decide. There's, there's different, there's different ways, the, what we use for the sewer is, um, CDVG, which is a state agency, puts out a chart every year that lists, um, what, um, they do, the amount of income for one individual, or if there's two individuals in the house, or three individuals, and, you know, it goes up incrementally. But it lists, um, what they consider, the state agency considers for that year, based on the previous year's information, what the very low income, which is the lowest ten percent of, of the population makes or, or earns. And then they have a moderately low, which I think is like the, the next twenty percent, and then they have just a low, which is like a little bit higher, just below medium. And so they have a couple of different levels, but anyways, they put this chart out every year, and the way it's set now for the city of Vader is that you have to meet the very lowest ten percent income for that current CDVG chart, um, in order to get the low income rate. Now, that's just the way it's set up for the sewer. You can use a, a chart like that, that is put out federally or by the state, or you could look at something maybe that the county puts out, I don't know, however council wants to determine that and set, say whatever their annual rate is for this, then that's, that's where the level is determined, so that we aren't sitting here trying to figure out what everybody's incomes are and that kind of stuff, but, but it's a chart that comes out every year, and you have to meet this certain criteria that's put together by people who supposedly know, know what, what the populace's income levels are and that kind of thing. So you just would have to state that's how, how you do it, I don't know if that made any sense whatsoever, but.
I'm going to see the five percent for.
I don't know what it is.
See the five percent on the side. We just went through that with the building inspector, it's five on the size of fifteen.
I think that sounds right.
What's the front?
Twenty.
Um, it was actually fifty-five feet from the middle of the road, um, so I don't know, we have to take off that.
And it's twenty front, fifteen back, five on seven.
So should we put five in or five in that new category right there, or the one that says how many feet?
Well, I just meant so many feet, but we could just use what our standard regulations are, just, it's the same. Okay, just say that whatever the current building regulations are, it's kind of, those same.
Are they bonded?
Could we, um, are we nearing?
Yeah, we're, we're close.
Close. Could we invite a council member, or two, not three, but to maybe extract from this list some parameters, and we could put together a potential document for your, for resolve in our next council meeting.
And if we've talked about a lot of them, I think we've captured a lot of them on this.
You want to have somebody specifically to limit which ones you want? In the interest of our time, you're next to talk.
I can take it to the attorney to do a write-up, an initial draft write-up, if you guys want to tell me, yes, we want this one, no, we don't want that one. We can just have that as a jumping off.
May I, may I ask, because I was not, I apologize, I wasn't here, but what was the permit fee cost?
We didn't talk about that, yeah, we haven't gotten to those details yet, just the idea that there would be some kind of a permit.
Um, I would like to add on to this list, um, I really don't want to see any build-ons. Meaning a deck, a wooden structure that would come.
It's got to maintain its ability to be moved.
Right, right, that, that, and I agree, but it'd be very easy to do a deck.
More, or.
And on two, and then on, or.
But then you're going to, then you're going to get people that want to put up a, a porch.
Porch, yeah, but, but I'm thinking.
A wheelchair ramp.
Yes, I'm thinking.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. A wheelchair ramp. So you're saying no wheelchair ramps?
Well, I'm saying, there, we're going to get people that need a wheelchair ramp for this kind of a purpose, so we got to make exceptions for.
Right, but I'm not talking about a porch.
But how, can anybody put a wheelchair in an RV? Can you, is there even room?
Yeah, locker up one. Some RVs have sliding glass doors in the back of them.
If you want to be specific, like, like when Lewis County's dealing with a property that's got a houseboat?
Oh, yes.
It's on the trailer.
Love, and that, that's my houseboat. Yes, me too, Jay and I both wanted that in our front yard. Well, that might be me too.
There you are.
So, so let me make sure that I'm taking the right information. You don't want any add-ons, except you would allow wheelchair ramp?
Yes.
Okay.
And onings, by the way, come with them, don't they?
Yes, as long as it's, as long as it is something that it was originally equipped, not like a building with.
Correct.
I don't want to see.
Yeah.
But sometimes you have to use that plumbing year round because of the weather.
And, and that's, and that's good.
I don't think there's anything wrong with a little small porch to cover the door area if they're coming out, and a little porch thing to get the wheelchair out.
I do, Donna.
Oh, oh, you just go the wheelchair off.
Well, no, 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 I don't need that.
That on when it comes out on there, but it's still on the trailer.
Okay, okay.
You can't always use those in the bad weather, Jason.
Okay, now, do you have an official plan?
So I kind of know a little bit of that.
I believe, yeah.
We do have an official plan.
I go first.
Well, that's fine.
Okay, there's, there's a criteria set up by the state of what handicapped excessive things should be. If they're elderly or ill or something, they have to live with their relatives, reasonable to assume, they're going to be handicapped. But they specify how many feet things have to be, how wide they have to be, and I don't know why we can't borrow that and use that, whatever, if reasonable accommodations have to be made for the handicapped, that could be put in there. And it doesn't include a shed or any of the, or, you know, I know what you're saying, but you just.
The main thing on this is, correct me if I'm wrong, but the main thing is the additional dwelling units, an additional dwelling unit could be another structure, but we're just trying to decide if we're going to use and let an RV be used, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
No. I was not, I was not thinking that another, um, I thought this was only RV, I was not thinking it was an actual building on the property because then that opens up another mold can of worms.
Well, that's already allowed.
That we already have, I believe.
That, yes, we do.
Have additional dwelling unit as a structure that people can build if they meet certain criterias and do the permitting for it.
Which zones?
I don't remember, Mike, you remember which zone that was in that allows ADUs?
Uh, I don't think it's in R1 zone.
Uh, I have it on my computer, I don't remember, but, um, I specifically saw that this last week. ADUs are allowed in, in one of the residential zones at least, at least one.
So a, a small shed that has what utilities?
It would have all utilities.
All utilities.
It is allowable, just not, but right now.
To be able to do that, which I don't know if a lot of people would be able to afford that, so that's why the RV is the second option that we're looking at. That was my understanding on, when we started this conversation.
I'll miss that part. I think the wording should specifically say wheelchair ramp. I agree with the ramp, but it could be a walker or a cane or, you know, some, some of them.
Just a handicapped accessible ramp.
But not specifically wheelchair, I think it would be limited to that one.
Well, there, along with it will become some kind of inspection, right? That someone's going to, some inspector's going to have to come out and make sure it's hooked up to the utilities properly and, and everything, and and if someone wants to have a ramp, the inspector will see their ramp or their special step or whatever it is, and, you know, it'll, it'll all get checked out.
I do. If you have someone that's disabled, and even if they're using a walker, they have to have a porch to step out on. It doesn't mean it has to be a deck, Judy, I don't know if you've ever dealt with, you've dealt with disabled people. How do you think they're going to get out of an RV if they can't have a porch to step on and then go down the ramp?
Yeah, I'm wondering if, if we would be able to limit it to just a ramp. I, I mean, that's kind of my thought.
Yeah, it does not have to be huge, you don't need a deck that takes up the whole forty feet of the RV if that's how long it is. You just need to have that deck out there for them to get out onto and then get down the ramp.
Just a little four by four platform with some solid steps to get down.
Step up and down the steps of the RV.
Our, our search group is doing a, a building, a front porch for a church in Centralia, and they have, uh, just the ramp you're describing, and you have to have a platform of specified size, and, so. Exactly, so, you're right.
Jill, that's a three point zero three zero R1 permitted uses accessory dwelling units.
Okay, so it's under the R1?
Whoa, that's surprising.
Yep, ADUs are an allowable use.
Is that a tiny home?
Basically, yeah, just a, a, a structure, a substructure from the original structure that can be used for dwelling purposes. But you can only have one.
Oh.
Sorry.
You can't go to village.
Sorry.
Okay, well, we've been at it for seventy minutes here on this topic. Can we, have you extracted enough to work?
I think so, I mean, I can throw this at the attorney and see what she can come up with.
Okay, we'll continue this at our next council meeting. All right, then, with that, thank you for your collective input on it, and the participation. Number five, continue discussion on home-based business regulations. Okay.
I think I still believe the one from that mind that I mentioned last.
You have a comment?
Jason, did you like that one from that one?
I did, I thought it was, it was pretty well-written, um, easy, I think there's some things that we can add to it, like, uh, examples of prohibited things, like, you know, a kennel or auto repair shop, you know, mixedboro kind of things. Um, and that's, uh, something from, this is like from a different city, and I thought that that was just some additions. I think the last time we talked about. And I think the last time we talked about this, we had a list of things that we needed to... I'm here to, from the attorney.
Pierce, Pierce County also has one that is very detailed, at different levels, also depending on certain criteria and so on and so forth. But they, they've got one that's written that covers almost everything.
By the way, just as a side note, I just received notification from AWC, our insurance provider, or anyway, about the new state regulations for business licenses, and some language that they're going to be requiring every city who has a business license to include this language by the end of the year. And one thing that it's stating is that, if I understand it correctly, and again, we'll hear back, 'cause Jennifer, our attorney, is gonna be working on this for us. But if I understand it correctly, if a home-based business that makes less than $2,000 a year isn't required to pay the, I believe it was the business license fees, like the permitting fees, for the city, I have to look at it again to make sure, but it's basically giving a break to small, super small businesses, like running out of people's homes and stuff. And I thought, oh, that's interesting for our community, 'cause that's kind of some of what we're talking about, is somebody that was just gonna make a little bit of income and should have to pay for all of these permits and stuff, would, you know, soak up a lot of that little bit of money that they would make from their efforts. And so anyways, there'll be more to come about that, what the state is requiring cities to do. But that might be a little break for the super small businesses at least. They still are required to fill out a form, but they don't have to, it doesn't cost them anything. And so they can just, you know, provide their license information and then not have to be charged for it, so.
Want us to use this form as a creative document that would reflect the city of this?
Well, I think it's a good form, I just wanted everyone else to...
I have a paper, and I like the Napabon one.
I think it does sign-ins, it does...
Does the noise, it does the smell, it does the... It says that.
You don't wanna offend your neighbors.
No, emissions of sound, noise.
It could be painting, it could be heavy painting odors or lacquers or things. Metal shop or something. Welding, I think that's very noisy. Or the grinding.
The grinding part.
That's not community stuff, though, anyway. Everything's all over, everything.
Yeah, it's not an holiday, everything.
Yeah, chainsawing.
Eight hours a day.
What about excessive lavender smell, that can be annoying.
Oh, Cindy, you're amazing.
In the interest of the expectancy, maybe somebody worked with this. Shall we check the Pierce County? Somebody have it?
I have it right here. Thank you, Donna, for bringing that up. I really never researched. And I failed to mention this in the council report, but I just wanted to bring these back and let everyone know that this is coming down on us very fast, the SR 506 closure.
The Lachmus Bridge.
Lachmus Bridge, for a whole year, starting in next year. So I don't know if you have this still, but...
I can find it, yeah.
We should make sure that people are aware of that. Chris wasn't here, so... And then this, this is what we get for Chris, buddy.
So is it a consensus that we wanna kind of do our own version of Napabon one? See what that looks like?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the meantime, you'd look at Pierce County, and between now and our next meeting, you do a comparative analysis? Do all of you have a copy of this?
The one from Toledo. Did you guys want to compare if there's anything new better than the Toledo one? This starts here.
I already got that one, too. I got that, I think I had that too.
I think it's...
Donna, Donna didn't get a job on this, she did a Toledo, Napabon. And then, oh, Pierce County, yeah, Pierce County. So this is... No, exactly, this is new, or...
Oh, the cottage one.
Cottage one, yeah. So we're doing this.
Well, and I think we have some marching orders. We gathered a consensus there, I would note that means a motion, so we will... With that, then, thank you for your input on that topic. And now I think that that completes our city business, and now it's time for public comment.
We don't have anyone stand up.
What?
My contractor was, had a bad day today. It's on time.
Well, then with that, we thank you for being here. We'll prepare this council meeting adjourned at 7:38 PM.